Good morning. I'll call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order, where we support community through quality public service. The date today is July 22nd, and calling the meeting at 8:30. We begin our meeting with a pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing no adjustments, I will ask for a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. At this time, we have public comment period. This is an opportunity for people to appear before the board. I don't see anybody out there in the audience. Have any of the commissioners received anything they need to share from a constituent? No? Okay. Thank you on that. Moving on to the consent agenda. The items that we have are the claims, the minutes from the regular June 24th meeting, our special meeting that we had on June 30th, the board meeting, regular board meeting, July 8th. And we also have the approval of Jacob Backer for engineering technician supervisor and the MOU for the North Shore Health and Community Center. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull?
Just about with the last one, with the about our agreement with the Sawtooth Mountain Clinic, with the health center. Just so I want to have an opportunity to tell the public one more time about what it is. Unless we want to do that right now.
No. You're pulling that to have further discussion?
Just so in case people were not listening before, I would just like them to know. I think it's a very good thing.
Okay. So that's item D, and we'll put that then later on the agenda.
You can put it under the administrator. I can speak to that.
Okay.
Okay. We'll put that under the administrator. A, B, C. That can be C under administrator. Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Gamble?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to move the consent agenda with the exclusion of item D.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you on that. So we're going to start our preliminary budget discussion with the Highway Department coming forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Want to thank you all for the opportunity to present our 2026 draft budget. Our 2026 budget totals $14,805,319. Our levy increase from the prior year is higher this year at 10%. For the five years prior to that, our increase from one year to the next averaged 5.4%. And you will see a list of the changes that are impacting that this year. One of the big things for us is $108,000 projected loss in federal forest funds. We are also losing the GLRI grant for $7,000. We do have a few increases, one of which we're waiting to hear on, and that, of course, is the projected 10% increase in health insurance premiums. We do have the addition of paid leave program premiums in '26 per state regulation. We have a 2.75% COLA. There are two personnel changes, one of which was just approved by the board, but when we prepared the budget in May, that was a proposal still pending. And that is, of course, the transition to the engineering tech supervisor. And then we have a two-year plan. This will be year two of transitioning our engineering tech to full-time year-round. This year she is nine-month, 30-hour per week. We have some other minor changes. And one thing that I don't think of as a change that I probably should have put on there, so I want to mention it, is that in our personnel, we have year two of the savings program for the addition of the maintenance worker two. We had started that in '25, and since the board had already approved it, it's my fault. I didn't think of that as a change, and so I should have listed that on the screen as well. Our budget is balanced for 2026. There is no use of or addition to reserves. I do want to note that in two and a half years, we have used $1,525,835 in reserves for the match that was required for the construction of our salt sand facility and our heated storage building. And so our reserves, of course, have taken a significant hit in those two and a half years, and we will need to work on that in future. Because the cash balance and reserves are so important for the Highway Department with our construction projects, especially as Engineer Haas obtains more grants. Our state aid funds, we can get 95% upfront when we're starting a construction project, but that's usually maybe $1.5 million. For example, on Mill the Hill, as I've told you this year, it's just shy of $12 million, and we got less than $1.5 million upfront. Everything else is reimbursement-based, and so we need to have cash available to front the payments for those projects until we can obtain reimbursement. This slide provides a brief overview of our department by division. So administration covers three staff salaries and a host of administrative expenses, and that does include all of the training for our engineering techs. State aid requires us to put that as an administrative expense because it doesn't benefit that year's construction projects only. We will be hiring a new engineering tech, and usually that tech will need two years of intensive certification trainings through MINDOT. And then all of our existing staff, of course, need to recertify every two to three years. And so that does comprise a significant portion of our training budget in administration. Maintenance covers the salary, of course, of our supervisor and our superintendent, our maintenance technician, our sign technician, our seasonal maintenance workers or mowers that you see out in about this time of year, and then all of our maintenance worker twos and threes who are doing the plowing, the grating, the gravelling, and all of the culvert installation, all of that work that you see ongoing throughout the year. This budget, of course, also includes all of the equipment and supplies necessary to achieve those tasks, whether that's salt, sand, signs, calcium chloride, gravel, equipment, and so forth. Engineering comprises all of our project design and construction costs, including the salaries of the engineering tech supervisor that you just approved, the two technicians, the ag inspector, the environmental technician, and, of course, the interns. And this year, we have a college intern. We had not been able to do that for a number of years because of the housing crisis, but this year, we had someone who actually had housing available. And it's been a wonderful experience for that intern this summer. The shop budget includes wages for the shop foreman and our mechanic, our equipment parts, our fuel, and then, of course, our facilities, maintenance, and utilities. You'll see a work for others, AWC, which is authorized work contribution. That's a fancy term that MINDOT requires us to use. And that includes, of course, all the fuel sold to our joint powers, fuel partners. That includes county cars, the LEC, search and rescue, MINDOT, ISD-166, North Shore Hospital, and the airport. And then we have all of the other minor billables, as well as work that we do not bill for per the county board or county policy. And then finally, we have the annual work comp and liability insurance. We just have that as a separate line item on our budget every year. This is, of course, our revenue summary. The lines turning green comprise the major categories this year. So construction grants are $8.8 million. Our regular maintenance funds comprise $1.8 million. And then the levy totals $3.2 million. Our 2026 budget shows five active road and bridge projects. The first one, we're excited to deliver. It has been in the works for 15 years, if you can imagine. There were watershed concerns that needed to be mapped out. And that's a good way to put it, right? And, of course, funding constraints. Would you like to give an update on it?
Yeah. Right now, what's nice with this one, so this is repaving the existing pavement on the Arrowhead Trail, so I believe it's two and a half miles, if I remember right, from Trunk Highway 61 up to Tower Road there, and then also upsizing that culvert at Otis Creek. So that's the main, those are kind of the big things. We're replacing all the cross pipes, any driveway pipes that needed as well. But yeah, right now, I think the plans are currently in review with state aid, so we're actually ahead of the ball, which is kind of nice. And so we should be great, looking really good for fall bid letting with this one and on track for 2026 construction.
The next project is the Pine River Bridge, which is actually at the northern end of the Arrowhead Trail on the UT portion. And that, how would I, wood beam?
Oh, yeah. It's a timber, timber. Yeah. So right now, it's a timber bridge, if you're familiar with that. You kind of get up there and you see it. It is smaller than it needs to be. It's deficient, so it's one of them on our list that we're like, nope, that needs to go. And so the plans are in development right now, but again, still on track, I believe, for 2026.
Cassatwell between the 292s as they hit the Gunflint Trail is slated for next year, and we have to construct in '26 because the LRIP grant will sunset on December 31 of next year. And what are the plans in terms of traffic management?
Yes. So that was a question we got ahead of the meeting, so I appreciate the heads up. It's always good because then we can prep for it. But so traffic control, more than likely, is going to be some combination of paving it half at a time and also utilizing County Road 92. And so, you know, the intent, you know, you try and not close the Gunflint. Obviously, that's our main artery up there. That being said, there will be times where if we're replacing a cross pipe, you know, it might be closed for a couple of hours while they're able to do that. But the nice thing is, is we actually do have a detour route. I know County Road 92 is probably a less-than ideal detour route, but the fact that it exists, period, at least gives us an option. So, you know, as the project gets closer and as we go, we'll have a better idea what the actual staging of that will look like, and so more to come.
And I believe on a related note, there were questions about the end of the trail. That is something that you've been trying to secure funding for, but it's not on the agenda right now.
Yes. Yeah. The end of the trail, that was something we had touched on in a County Connections article about funding. So we didn't have anything secure with it. The loss would have been if these grant programs would have gone away. And so the grant programs that we're competitive with, the Federal Lands Access Program, for example, is one. I'm actually working on that application right now. That did come back. It was paused for a while, but it did come back, and so that program still exists. But we don't, we're not losing any money to do anything towards the end of the trail. Not yet, at least.
Thank you so much.
We are planning to resurface Chicago Bay Road in conjunction with the Arrowhead Trail Otis Creek Culvert Project, and that is on track as well.
Yep. Those plans are actually all done. We did those in-house, and so we're just waiting for the plans to finish with the Arrowhead project, and we can release those at the same time.
And then finally, we have our collaborative striping project, which we've been talking about the last couple of years. Again, we do that in collaboration with St. Louis and Lake Counties. They administer the project for a very small fee, and it makes the prices so much more competitive, and it takes really some significant work off our tax plates, so it works well. So, capital expenditures. I really want to talk about the truck. In 2021, the granite tandem axle truck with plow and sander that we ordered and was delayed for one year due to supply chain issues cost $263,868.32. For 2026, we're just under $380,000 for the same unit. That is a 43.9% increase in six years. So you'll see at the end of that, we are setting a little bit aside in our budget this next year if the board so approves, and that is why the prices have just been unpredictable, I guess is the best word for it. And we are trying to get through this round of replacements and keep our fund healthy. And the other things, as you see, are one of our pickets is scheduled for replacement. We have the two graders because of the one that failed this year and have the $100,000 transmission estimate. We went ahead and purchased that on a five-year purchase plan, and then the scheduled one for next year is also going to be on that same type of replacement plan. And as an aside, our shop staff has ripped the transmission out of the unit that broke down, and they are working on repairing it so that we would have a backup until we get all of these units with these same higher hours replaced in the next three years. So with a little bit of luck, their parts that they've ordered, which were very reasonable, will be what addresses the problem, and we will be able to operate that with a much lower cost. So that's exciting. And then this is just a summary again of the personnel changes, and so I just wanted to talk about those and let you know that the total personnel budget impact is $164,090. And so I wanted to break down our levy increase of that 296,865. $164,090, of course, is the increase in personnel costs. $108,000 is the offset of that loss of federal funding, as we talked about. Then there's the $7,000 GLRI grant suspension. And then we do have that $11,000 increase in the ag inspector budget that we talked about, and had we not lost the GLRI funding, of course, that would not have shown up as such an increase. So that's part of that. And then we just have some minor fluctuations that are under, you know, $78,000. That accounts for the balance of that levy increase. And so we would like to open the floor to questions or comments.
As usual, so good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Always appreciate all the details and all of the future projects and what you're looking forward to as far as the time range goes. So opening up for questions.
Engineer Haas?
Yes.
Just one more time, would you publicly say when we're going to get Chicago Bay, when work will be done on Chicago Bay?
So 2026. The plans are, plans are all done. We're just waiting for the plans to finish up, and like I said, they're almost basically, they're in state aid review right now for the Arrowhead Trail portion. And so then both of those projects will be let at the same time. I know there have been a lot of questions about if we're going to reclaim or pave kind of the west end of the north road.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And so that is one we've wrestled with internally a lot. I know over the last couple of years, it's something that I've wanted to do. I know the pavement is bad. I believe it's a quarter mile long, if I remember right. You know, and you kind of go back and forth with it. You look at the costs that we have for a small patch on the Gunflint, for example, just a patch, not even the removal of it, because we did that in-house, not even the putting back of the base and whatever, just the patch alone. Tiny patch, I think, set us back, you know, $20,000 or $30,000. And so that's, you know, maybe 100 feet, so not a quarter mile. And so you can imagine now you get a quarter mile of road in there. Now you have to reclaim it. Now you probably want to pave it again. And so it's that dollar amount that we only have so much in our local funding to spend on that. And so then we have to decide where to do it. I don't want to call a construction company up and pay the mobilization costs if I can time it with some other bigger projects. And so as we talk about Chicago Bay and the Arrowhead Trail, that's right down the road from that chunk of the north road. So I think we would save locally on mobilization costs by waiting until 2026. So I know that hasn't been the most ideal answer for folks, but just with how expensive it is to do construction up here and getting folks up, you know, that's kind of the game we have to play, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Commissioner, or Madam Chair. Of the projects slated for 2026, the percentage of impact, if any, that comes other than grant monies, in other words, from the levy, are you able to address the amount that is effect when you refer to local funds as local funding money that is driven by the levy?
Right. Yes. Yeah. Local funds is, yeah, levy-driven, or in some cases, it would be like our TST account, that transportation sales tax. Chicago Bay Road is wholly funded with TST funding. So in theory, as long as the bids come in okay, that should just be funded with that, and we don't have to touch our kind of levy. We do have a levy line item for project funding. We typically save that in case there's overages we don't account for. You know, if we're, you know, if something happens and we have to blast rock, you know, we're able to compensate with that, which is nice. Sometimes to help offset maybe consultant costs, whether it's for design or construction inspection, we can use that. Also, on like the Pine River Bridge, for example, even though that's a town bridge, and so we're able to access special town bridge funds with that from the state, there is a local match requirement with that. So it kind of depends, I'm trying to remember what it is. It's either 10 or 20 grand depending on what we do for the design aspect.
It's $10,000 match for engineering and $10,000 match for construction, so it's 20 total.
That's what it is. So, you know, there can be components of that. Sometimes if there's more approach work that needs to be done on a bridge project like that, that approach work isn't covered by bridge bonding, and so, you know, you kind of, there's a line where you can spend road money versus bridge money. And so if there's a little more approach work that has to happen, that could come from our local levy funds. And so I don't have a hard number for you, but I know based on the projects that we've listed, strictly levy-dependent dollars, we're probably just talking about that 20 grand that Lisa mentioned.
And I think it's beneficial, appreciate the response, for, you know, the public, primarily taxpayers, to understand the work that we see done because of resourcefulness, that the percentage that comes from outside money as opposed to that that is affected by levy. And we look at the work that is being done, and the greater majority of that funded with outside dollars, that speaks to the resourcefulness of the department. So I think it's an important thing. All of the line items are things that inform, but when a person wants to know basically, how does that affect me, because these are big numbers?
Right.
I think it's beneficial to show actually impact as it relates to levy.
Nope. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Commissioner Gamble, if I may provide an example. The Pine River Bridge that we just talked about for '26 with now the $20,000 match, without the UT designation that Commissioner Haas worked on, the county would be on the hook for the estimated $1.67 million. So there is one very concrete example on next year's budget.
Yeah. Yeah. I think there's internal things that we have to deal with when we're dealing with budget, but there's external relative to how we understand and interpret this, and I think that's important, so.
I appreciate it. Yeah, that's a, thank you, Lisa. The UT designation was big for us. That was eight or nine bridges on our, I'll say, local system that we would have been on the hook for. And so already, you know, I can think of, how many have we done? Three, four already? I mean, you're millions of dollars at that point in time that we don't have to spend locally, and instead of millions, it turns into tens of thousands. So that was big. I know we had to put up some signs, and people kind of hate the UT signs everywhere, but millions of dollars for, you know, a couple thousand dollars worth of signs, I will make that trade any day.
Same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just really appreciate the layout and really helps us keep the projects in mind and timeline and knowing that they've been in the works for quite a while. I'm just really pleased to see them on the front burner here, so thank you.
So thank you. Always appreciate your coming this time of year, especially.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, moving on to interim use permit, Niva will present that to us.
Good morning, commissioners. I have one item for you this morning. This is an item from the Planning Commission meeting from last week. This is an interim use permit for two years for a mobile food unit, also known as a food truck. It's located at the North Country cottages, a property that has current resort activities, and this would be operated by different operators than the owners of the resort. So this entity came to the resort and said, hey, we'd like to put up a food truck, and so that's how we began this process. The Planning Commission reviewed the staff narrative, as well as listened to the information provided by the applicants. There was no written comments through this public comment period, and nobody was at the public hearing to comment on it, so no opposition to the request. One of our Planning Commission members was the abutting property owner closest to the food truck and has a good relationship with the resort owners, so he had no issue with the food truck and its location, which is close to the property line. But we felt that that didn't need a variance because this is a short-term use. It's a two-year interim use, so it's actually a higher level of oversight, and we don't currently have any ordinance language regarding food trucks, so we have some room for deliberations and interpretation on that. With that, the conditions of approval that were recommended by the Planning Commission were generally compliance with other local, state, and federal regulations. So State of Minnesota, Minnesota Department of Health food license will be required for this activity, as well as compliance with our state septic requirements. Some achievers and the environmental health officer worked with the owners and came up with two solutions for how to handle the gray water to come out of that, and that was included in his memo separately with the staff narrative, as well as compliance with the county setback requirements. If there's going to be any structures placed, so the food truck can be in the setback, but if they add any other structures, those would need to meet standard setbacks, and any signs that are placed would comply with Cook County sign ordinance. With that, we had a nice discussion, and there was a unanimous recommendation for approval of this two-year interim use permit. After that time, a renewal interim use permit would be required.
Well, it looks like he has a very good plan. However, his title, The Erratic Coffee Base Camp, doesn't sound like he has a really solid plan there. Anyway.
Kind of all over the place.
If you remember, there's a property next to it that was Carnita, the art gallery and all that. So my question is, there's a little cottage right before the gallery. Where is the truck going to be?
The truck is on the opposite side where there's like a gravel turnaround where the recycling and the garbage drop-offs are, so on the east side of the property. So it's on the. Grandberry side of the.
It's on the property where the gift shop is?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep. Right next to the gift shop.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Right, right. I was just trying to figure out if it was over to the side, to the, more to the west, or if it's actually on that property.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Well, we have another possibility for coffee in the west. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned that we don't have a policy in place at this point for food trucks. Is that something that has been on the radar, so to speak, given we're seeing a lot more food trucks and trying to be more proactive in that regard as to how we do that and how we allow that, you know, sort of happen in our community?
Yes. Good question. Some of the Planning Commission members had the same question. And so following this interim use permit, we generally had a discussion item on the Planning Commission agenda, just talking about food trucks in general. And we're planning on putting together a little subcommittee with the Planning Commission to talk through the different regulations and to evaluate whether or not we want to put in better requirements in the zoning ordinance. Cook County has kind of this catch-all provision because we have such an eclectic community, and so we have the discrepancy in our office to allow things like this that aren't clearly stipulated in the zoning ordinance to move forward for consideration. With that said, we as staff don't like to have to make so much judgment on these of, you know, when does this need extra permits? When does this not need permits? So putting some language in the zoning ordinance may be very beneficial, both for staff and the public, to be on the same playing field. So I do anticipate that work group to start forming. We were missing a couple of Planning Commission members at the last meeting, and so once we have a full Planning Commission, we can kind of revisit this. The Planning Commission also requested staff to bring a little bit more information on a couple of their questions as we begin exploring this in further detail. We do often find that most of the food trucks are in the city areas of Cook County, but this did have, there was like two food trucks in Luton this summer. So it's, you know, these things move in, and we need to be proactive in finding ways to create a path.
Yeah. Thank you for the response. I think it's important that the intention is not to become restrictive, but it is to anticipate so that we allow this in a context that's informed. And sometimes things just happen, and then they get to a point where it becomes a little more unwieldy, and it's harder to address it at that point than it is to be more proactive and aware and try to look at it not from a standpoint of trying to control everything that happens, but make sure that it. that happens, but make sure that it's intentional.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I'll hear a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution for a two-year interim use permit for mobile food unit at 4210 West Highway 61 in Lutson with the conditions suggested by the Planning Commission.
And I'll second that motion.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day.
Human Resources, Allison Plummer.
Following the Committee of the Whole meeting that we had last week in which I presented some proposed changes to our provider options for our deferred compensation for 57D plan, I'm here today to formally request approval of those changes. This is something that the Benefits and Wellness Committee has been researching and diving into and so coming on their behalf as supporting and recommending this change. And this would, I added in the agenda item too, this would be in effect starting January 1st of 2026 to correspond to the calendar year and our open enrollment period.
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we discussed this in Committee of the Whole and then requested maybe if we had talked to our present provider to see what their response was going to be to that. And then the other thing was, I think it's important for the public to understand this has no, and if I'm stating this correctly, this has no impact relative to cost. This is a matter of service level of delivery. Yeah.
Correct. Yes, and I don't mean to chuckle, although I saw some reactions from others. Yeah, I did get a response and it was very less than subpar.
Yeah.
So that's why I would request proceeding with this change.
Yeah. It just sort of reaffirmed why we even have this on the agenda.
Agenda, very much so. Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll hear a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the deferred compensation changes. The Benefits and Wellness Committee has supported and recommends removing Nationwide and adding Edward Jones to take effect January 1st, 2026.
I support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Item number seven, we'll go to Attorney Peterson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to approve by resolution authorization for me to enter into a grant contract agreement, which allows us to accept a $48,000 grant, which partially funds the position of the victim witness coordinator, split with the paralegal position. Right now that is staffed by Cathy Ann Travis, who does an excellent job. She maintains the grant. She does all the reporting. She will come later this year to speak to you a little bit more about the requirements and the victim services that are offered, but for now, this is the request.
We do like to hear about grant funding, for sure. You always wonder what's available out there in your particular office. So that's great that they're researching for all that. Commissioner Sullivan?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve by resolution to authorize our county attorney, Jean Peterson, to enter into the grant contract agreement with the Office of Justice Programs and the Minnesota Department of Public Safety.
I'll support. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you to you and to the office for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moving on to item eight, Auditor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chad Dipman from One Roof is here. I believe that's you. I hope it's you. We haven't met. So this is a request to release some property from a development agreement. The county is party two. In 2018, we issued abatement bonds for an apartment unit in Lutson, 16-unit apartment. And finance workforce housing project, land owned by One Roof and its subsidiaries. So the project was built on approximately eight acres of land owned by One Roof. The bonds themselves are paid by the rents on that property. It's a complicated agreement between the EDA and One Roof loan agreements and the county. We're protected by a pledge agreement among the county, the EDA, and One Roof promissory note and the loan agreement among the three parties. And One Roof is now requesting that about a three-acre part of that, portion of that land be released from the workforce housing covenants and restrictions so that they can use it. They've stated that they intend to use it to further their mission in Cook County. It could be sold for cash, probably speaking of things you're going to talk about, or it could be developed. They're not sure at this point, but it's not needed for this project, for the buildings that are there. And Niva could have spoke to this because it's gone to the Planning Commission. The septics for both sites and all those things for land services are, they're all fine, legal to have two separate properties here. So there's a lot of work needs to be done with all these agreements to make those changes. And Fry Burger is doing that. And One Roof has agreed to pay for those charges. And Chad is here to answer any questions, or did you want to add anything else?
I don't, members of the Commission, I don't think I need to add anything, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That is in my district, and so I was very happy to see the apartment complex start with the buildings. What plan do you have as far as taking three acres? Is it next to where the apartments are or at the end of it? I think there's 13 more acres that could be developed.
Madam Chair, the three acres in question are up the hill directly behind the apartment buildings.
Oh, okay. Not beside it?
To the northeast, not to the side, no.
Okay, okay. And you have some further use and admission in Cook County, so you have some other plans?
Yes, Madam Chair. Just maybe a little background on the timing of this. I'm new to One Roof, and by the way, I'm Chad Dipman, Housing Development and Construction Director. I started last November and the organization kind of had put this, started this process a while ago, and then my predecessor retired, and then it took me a while to get up to speed. So it's just taken a little while to get to this point. But the intention is to free that remaining property from encumbrances like the mortgage and to give us some flexibility to purpose that property for something more than it's currently being used for, which is nothing right now. We have initiated, and it's been a little bit slow-going, a process to try to figure out what we might do or what would be the best use of that property. We haven't really settled on a solution for that. Some ideas that we are exploring would be sale of, just sale of the property on the market for whatever someone else might want to do with it. That's a little bit hampered by the access, which would be through our property on our driveway in between the apartment buildings. So as a private residence, that might not be the most attractive use. We're looking at it for the development of some single-family community land trust homes. That same issue presents itself for us, but it might be something that we could get around or surmount. We are, my colleague, and I need to get an update from her on this, was going to approach Arrowhead Electric about the possibility of adding solar there. We have the opportunity to do that on the apartment buildings themselves, and that might be the best thing to do, but they do have a pretty large ground-mounted array behind their building and that, this is like just next door. So maybe that would be something they'd be interested in doing or partnering with us on. So we're just, we're kind of exploring some options. Like Mr. Powers mentioned, whatever revenue we might generate off of the sale or other, however, we might generate revenue off of the property, we do intend to either reinvest in Four Directions dwellings, or we have a property in Graham Ray that we are intent on developing, and that's another project that I've been tasked with to figure out what we're going to do there. But it looks like the best use of that property, which is just adjacent and a continuation of the homes we did on Nordic Star, would be more single-family community land trust homes.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Commissioner?
I just want to thank you for being here and presenting and been before the EDA and, you know, this topic has been discussed in the EDA as well as the HRA and support there. And so I'm supportive of this as well and really appreciate the partnership we have with One Roof because we've got some great projects done and hope to do more. So whatever, whatever helps your hand, I think is going to help our community's hand here, too.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Madam Chair and the rest of the Commissioners, I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the community for the community land trust and for the housing you've provided in Lutson and the provision of housing here in Grand Marais, the single-family units. It's really been a positive thing for so many individuals and so many families, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 70 of our packet relative to this issue, it refers to the board finds that the release does not substantially impact the project or the security for payment. Which board is that referring to? Whereas based in part on the information provided by the company, the board finds...
Let me see here. I'm looking.
And I'm referring to it from the standpoint of where the oversight is coming, from the standpoint of our position relative to the security that's in the document as it exists right now.
I have to find page 70.
Yeah, it's on page 70 at the top.
I think it's three of the PDF.
Pardon?
It was in the PDF, so I can't find it.
Yeah.
But I've got it now.
Okay. Is that now there for? Is that what you said? The board?
It's at the, well, at the top here, it says whereas based in part on information provided by the company.
Gotcha.
The board. And when it refers to the board, it's finds, this board is saying finds that the release does not substantially impact the project or the security of repayment. And that's Cook County Board.
It is our board then. Okay, and this predates this discussion, you know, here. In my first term, the one housing was, you know, development that was being proposed and certainly it was something that we were looking forward to having as a provision. Can you say what precipitated, and it might be an unfair question given your tenure, but what precipitated the decision to take a look at this to remove that portion of property?
Sure. Members of the Commission, Commissioner Gamble, I think that it was simply a matter of its excess property not currently being used, and we think that it could be used.
Okay, thank you. And our responsibility is twofold. One is the fiduciary responsibility relative to ensuring that the agreement is covering the financial, you know, exposure that we would have relative to how it was drafted initially. And Brady, you said earlier on that in our evaluation, looking at this, that's not an issue, and partly that's due to the value of the land and it's covered with the equity that exists.
Yeah, the assessed value is in excess of 2.2 million.
Right.
Right now, that will change very slightly with that unused piece of land.
Yeah.
The revenue actually comes from the rents, and then One Roof guarantees it. There's promissory note and security agreement behind it, so they backed it with their company besides. And none of that really changes with this unused three acres of land. And if we have any real technical questions, Mia Tibodo from Fry Burger, she's available by phone also if we have any.
Yeah, and again, our responsibility is, you know, fiscal responsibility relative to whether there's any risk in releasing. And it seems in that oversight that that's not an issue. The other is, which is on page 79, is just talking about the potential for what that land might be used for. So however, that gets communicated in good faith as to, we're looking at this, and this is why I asked the question of what caused, you know, this decision to come to the forefront. If we were looking at this as other opportunity or if we're looking to try to liquidate in order to support existing ventures that we have, and we're looking for where revenue might be to be able to help us to do that. And so the other side of this, other than the fiduciary responsibility, is that the language that's stated is pretty ambiguous, so we can look at it in, you know, multiple different areas. But if it's going to be reinvested in future housing opportunities locally, or if it's simply to stabilize financial status of existing programs or One Roof, whatever, as long as we're covered, what you do with the money is not our decision to make, but it is something in how it gets represented before the public as to intent.
Sure.
Commissioner Wade?
Okay, this was before my time. Was there tax abatement granted for this entire parcel?
The tax abatement process is looking at other properties in the area that you potentially could use their tax, their property tax, and use it to make these payments if you had to. That's what the tax abatement statute and bonding is. But if you have revenue from another source, then you cancel that abatement each year. And they, the rent through all these agreements, the rent from those units, that is paid to us in the fall each year, and so we don't actually abate any of those properties that might, you might say, benefit in that area. So we don't actually do an abatement because there's other revenues.
Okay, and then so...
And they've all paid, I should say, they've never been late on a payment so far.
And if they're going to cleave off three acres, does that have to be surveyed?
I think that's all minority.
No, the three acres is an independent survey for that three acres? So that, okay, just wanted to know.
Yes, members of the Commission, we submitted a survey showing the lot split and the new definitions of those two parcels, and that was approved by the Planning Commission.
Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Relative payments are being made from the revenues that are coming from the rent. And if we were to look at that obligation, that payment that needs to be made, and we look at the revenues generated from occupancy, so to speak, is if that proportion of rent that is being generated consistently historically is significantly more than what the obligation is, then we're always at a level where we're not feeling that that payment is in jeopardy because we're not collecting enough rent relative to occupancy. Does that make sense? In other words, if 50% occupancy meets the obligation and whatever, then that's another reason to say that we're in a solid financial position.
I don't know what the rents are today, so.
Yeah, but when you look at the total revenue generated from rents and you look at your obligation, we've always been significantly more than that is, that would be something that tells you that what we're putting up basically as collateral in this is good. If we look at other instances in the county where we've made decisions relative to the business park, the golf course, or whatever, we see there that we anticipate that revenues will retire the debt. And when it doesn't, then that puts taxpayers in a position of having to meet that obligation. That's why the discussion.
So I'll make a motion to approve by resolution to release the property subject to a development agreement and related covenants of the 2018 Cook County Workforce Housing Project in Lutson.
I'll support that.
Any further questions? Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your hearing, and best to you in your position after nine months.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hope to see a lot more of you, Chair.
All right. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
You're calling Dan?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Thanks, Chair.
So next item, Madam Chair, this is, I guess we'll wait till we get him on the phone.
Good morning. Dan?
Hi, Dan. This is Gianna, and we are ready for you on the Board of Commissioners meeting. Good morning.
Good morning. Sounds good. Thank you.
Dan, I can introduce it. So this is a resolution asking the board to approve, providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of 6.2 million general obligation solid waste revenue bond series 2025B. And this was a resolution that we approved a month ago, basically, June 10th, and awarded a winning bid for these bonds. But shortly thereafter, the winning bidder determined that due to a tax provision on the bonds that they hadn't considered, they did not want to close the sale transaction. They forfeited their good faith deposit. So Ellers and Associates have now solicited bids again for the sale of these bonds. They took bids yesterday and are presenting for your consideration approval today.
Well, good morning. Thank you for your time. My name is Dan Tinter. I'm a municipal advisor with Ellers and Associates. And as mentioned, we are here to present the sale results of the general obligation solid waste revenue bonds. As the board is aware, these particular bonds are to finance the construction of new solid waste facilities within the county. And during this process, the county did go through a rating with S&amp;P Global, and you were awarded AA stable rating. But it's worth noting that solid waste facilities are eligible for Minnesota state credit enhancement, so the bonds actually carry a AAA rating, which is the rating of the state of Minnesota, since they agree essentially to stand in your shoes. For whatever reason, you're unable to make any payments. We don't certainly expect that to happen, but it is an advantage of the program, and it allows the county to secure lower rates by availing themselves of the AAA rating. Yesterday, at your direction and on your behalf, we solicited bids from qualified banks and underwriters. We received only one bid, and interestingly, it was from Baird of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, which was the same bidder from the first go-around on the bonds. The tick was 5.2367%, and that compares a little unfavorably with the pre-sale report. We were estimating rate around 5.05% at pre-sale, so we've come in about 19 basis points or so above where we were anticipating. Generally, that has to do with the fact that these are bonds that are subject to the alternative minimum tax, and the marketplace's alternative minimum tax bonds is much smaller than tax at same bonds generally. So it can be a little more difficult to estimate what these rates will end up being. But ultimately, what ended up happening is we accepted the 6.2 million. There was a discount allowance of about $156,000, but then also an underwriter's premium bid of rate around $82,000. Once we did all of the math, you end up getting about $6.156 million in project funds, and that's a little more than what we were anticipating at the time of pre-sale. We were rate around $6,076,000, so about $80,000 more in funds available for the project. Although the interest rate was a little higher than we were originally anticipating, the total principal and interest payments on the bonds are only about $213,000 more over the life of the bonds. And so your average annual payment actually only went up about $8,000 a year. So at pre-sale, we were estimating a payment of rate around $438,000. And now with the actual sale results, the payment currently, if the board were to award the sale, would be rate around $446,000. So even though the interest rate was a little higher, ultimately, how that translates into what the county will pay year over year is only about $8,200 more. Certainly don't want to make light of $8,200, but in the context of this sale, it is a relatively small amount. Assuming the board moves forward with awarding the sale, we would notify the underwriter today, and then the board would close on August 12th. So that's when money would actually be wired to the county, and funds would be available to pay for the project. Ultimately, we recommend that the board adopt the resolution awarding the sale of $6.2 million in general obligation solid waste revenue bond series 2025B. And there is a revised resolution that was distributed to the county board for your consideration today. You may have seen the blank one in your agenda packet, and then as of sale, we go through and fill in all the numbers based on what we learned at sale. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the pre-sale report, the resolution, or any of the moving parts that relates to any of the numbers or the bid that was accepted yesterday.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the information and the fact that Baird is stepping up, and they were second or third in line, but now they're top in line. So, questions or comments, Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dan, thank you for the information. Just a question, if I understood you correctly, that the winning bidder in the first round, and then running into the issue of the designation of the nature of the bonds that they withdrew, and it's the same investor that is on this bid second round, is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, yes, that is correct. Baird of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, was the original winning bidder in the first round, and then bid this second round.
All right, and thank you for that. So do you think that it was a strategy on their part, or have you seen this in this situation previously, where it's just knowing what they do in the business that they do as investors, that they use this strategy and come in and therefore get a better return?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, generally, no, we don't encounter that as a strategy that a particular bank or underwriter would use. One of the advantages of issuing bids through a competitive process is that the financing, the bonds are available to really a nationwide pool of banks and financial institutions. So it would be quite difficult for a bank or financial institution to engage in that type of gamesmanship with respect to a particular bond sale.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve my resolution to issuance, sale, and delivery of 6.2 million GO solid waste revenue bond series 2025B, establishing the terms and form thereof, creating the debt service fund therefore, and awarding the sale thereof.
I support.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, and congratulations on the sale.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brady has given us a whole new thing to look at here with the budget proposals.
So...
Lot to absorb.
Well, this, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is the general fund. It's the first you've seen of the general fund, and this year, different. What is different is that we had so many, let's say, things swirling around economically a few months ago when we started the process, that we gave the all department heads the request to give us some strategic impact. First, describe what your department does, what are the core services, and then things that are maybe outside of core services, or maybe are not funded by restricted funds. And then tell us how you, you know, what is the impact on those, because those are the things that are, let's say, optional to some degree. And so they've all given you that information from their perspective. So you've got a lot of those in this packet. And along with that, the budget requests from each department. So, a lot to digest. So that's why you just called this the first look at it, because you may have a lot of questions and not be able to form them today, but between now and when we have to set the preliminary levy, and all the way to December. But firstly, to get to that preliminary levy in September, which we have to approve, not the whole budget, but the levy. And to summarize a little bit, the, I picked out some of the larger items requests. It's in the middle of about 100 pages there. But first, I guess, the payroll is included here. The cost of living, 2.75%. We've got a 10% estimated increase in health insurance, and those will be updated in August when we find out our actuals, hopefully lower. But the larger items in the general fund that are new come to about $1.3 million. And the largest two items, obviously, are recent bond issues. One of them is the LEC bonds, so those payments are about $515,000. I've got here the abatement bonds from last year, since we haven't made a full payment last year. So we'll be making our first full payment on those bonds next year. And even last year, we were using the ARPA funds to make that payment, to get our levy down to the 5%. So now we'll hit the full amount. It'll be a little bit larger than what I have on here, given what you heard today. So probably an extra $10,000 or so from what's on here. And then those are the two large ones. The next largest, there's nothing we can do about the bonds, obviously. Maintenance is asking for a snow equipment, a Bobcat, and not to go into this in any detail, because he should speak to that, exactly what it's used for. But that's about $100,000. That's the next largest. Community center capital reserves, they've done a lot of analysis with Brook and with their community center board on all of the facilities up there at the community center. And in order to replace them with the quality they're looking at, they need to increase the replacement schedule, just like the highway department does for their equipment. So it's debatable as to, but that's their first request. And Sarah can speak to that, or provide more information on that if you have requests on that. And then the next is a request actually from my office and the recorder's office for a shared position. This is the only position request this year from any department so far. I don't think Public Health is going to make a request either. So this is probably the only one. And this is for a number of reasons. In my office, we're running into more work than we can handle in some of our financial positions without overtime. So there's this. Overtime has been pretty steady in recent years, and it's increasing. So this 25-hour-a-week position would eliminate the overtime. It would help with audit preparation, lodging tax accounting, and other grant accounting. Some of it is, if the position has enough time, would be to learn some of the things that I do, which is probably more considered daily work, not daily work, but work that other people in the office would do. And when it comes to passing on this job, I probably shouldn't be passing that on to someone else. So, for example, the airport grant, I manage all of that myself individually, and that's probably not something a department head, you would want to pass on to. This position would also help with elections, grant accounting, other duties this time might allow. For the recorder's office, they're looking at 10 hours. They've traditionally had a third person to cover when the two of them are gone, when, you know, vacation schedules and trainings, et cetera. And they found out after a couple of years that they do need that position. And it has to be a fully trained position. It isn't just a taken phone call. So they have to learn the recording process. So I think that's the main issue for them. And so no decisions today. That's just a request. The next highest is the maintenance contractual snow plowing and garbage. So it's just been a little higher than was budgeted in the maintenance department. So that's a higher item. The BWCA reappraisal, Bob has put that back into the budget this year. They still intend to do that. The total cost is shared with Lake and St. Louis County. This is when we do our next 10-year appraisal. We found out it was very important that we be on top of this, because, well, you found out. Capital, MIS capital purchase, they've increased their total capital 20,000, increase in the number of laptops, and they've taken over a camera system that used to be paid for in the building fund. The agricultural inspector, that's up 11,000. That's coming from the highway department. But they would have paid for that with some federal funds, GL, is that federal GLRI? Yeah, which got cut. So here's, the increase hits the general fund. And then the two increase in the positions in the highway department that Lisa talked about, the environmental tech and the tech to engineering supervisor. So those are the largest individual items. So we'll be talking about that a lot more. I didn't present a full levy every department because Human Services hasn't been able to finish their budget yet. They have to get their arms around the federal changes. As you've heard with the highway department, they took a big hit with the federal money that comes into their department, 108,000. And I think there's more programs like that in PHHS. So they need a few more weeks to get their arms around that. And then once we have those numbers, then I'll give you an overall.
Thank you. This is definitely a good guide for all of us, especially going into our budget and finance committee in another week. Any other questions or comments, Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brady. I also want to thank department heads. Budget is always challenging. This year, we find it challenging because it's moving parts. And the moving parts have made it a lot more complicated, because we have to make assumptions. And when we don't know definitive things, we're left to those assumptions. But we also asked department heads if they could be a little more thorough in their response so that the board, commissioners could be more informed in making decisions and understand the origins of the numbers that are on the paper. And this is the beginning, we understand, and it's a long process. But the response that has come from department heads in the narrative, as well as looking at the effects on their budget and their proposals, it should be noted that that effort is very much appreciated. And I think our intent, certainly, and with a new administrator coming in, and their shepherding that Rena has provided for us, this is something that we are hoping for, is to build integrity into our process that communicates both to our public and allows commissioners to have more information in decision-making. So we shouldn't let this go. And I know we all appreciate the effort that was put in. And this isn't just to keep people busy, because people are busy enough. This is to help us build integrity in response to our community and to help us to make informed decisions. So, thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the new requests, some of which are piggybacking off of last year. And as Brady said, we used ARPA dollars to try to keep our levy down, and we knew that was not a long-term solution. But the intention was to try to lessen the immediate impact and try to smooth out levy impact in general. And so, whereas the... And so whereas the increases are significant, and I think Brady had said it's about a 10 percent overall.
Yeah, I didn't say that, but yes. General Fund, right now, about 10 percent over last year, same as the Highway Department. So in spite of the intent to dig deeper, that's what we're faced.
Well, and we're kind of carrying last year's burden, yeah.
We are. This is with no fund balance use. We've been using a lot of fund balance in the last few years, so.
Yep. And so where I was going with all this is, at least last year, the intention was to, again, this year, use fund balance to try to smooth things out, because we still have substantial fund balance. But we can get into those details and how we draw those lines later. But just to give some perspective on, similar to last year, it was like nine, you know, the levy, levy amount was, was higher, much like this. And then we tried to keep that lower, even though, again, we can't just continually do that. Our fund balance will be taken down to a point where we can't do that. And so it's good to just be aware of that path and where we'd like to get off of it and to what level, so.
Yeah, we can make that analysis on the, on the fund balance once we get our preliminary but, or audit numbers. Should come in August.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sullivan.
I just wanted to say that that 10 percent is very similar to what other counties are experiencing right now. That's where St. Louis County came in, and I think, you know, I guess it doesn't surprise me. But I appreciate your remarks, Commissioner Mills, about thinking about that glide path using some fund balance over time.
Commissioner White.
It's unsustainable. We can't keep tapping into the fund balance. And so with the federal situation and our absolutely loss of funding for Medicare, Medicaid, Medicaid and food stamps, our, our community is going to be in trouble. It's going to put more pressure on private entities that, charitable entities, people that with, with the ability to reach out and help. But our county is not going to be able to continue to, I mean, we're not going to be able to continue to grow all that we're growing. We have got to prioritize. And is it taking care of our families and people that can't, I mean, for the value of their lives, you know what I mean? Or is it we're going to have more people employed? And I'm not talking about just this year. I'm just talking about going to the future. Maybe we ought to do a real assessment of what each employee does, and is there any way to consolidate what three people do into what two people do? So when I'm recommending or suggesting, maybe we should have a hiring freeze going forward. I'm not saying we cut anybody, you know, like slash anybody out. But we really need to look at our expenses. We have no control over what the federal government does, and they impact our state funding. So great that we have a fund balance, but we better start sooner rather than later, as in last year. We need to start cutting our spending. And that's, I think we need to continue to think about that, so.
There's a lot of moving parts, that's the thing.
Yes.
And we don't really know about Medicaid yet. I think it's going to be planned out for several years in the cutting, not to start till next year. So, you know, it's just, it's just a matter of taking that into consideration. And if we know when we're actually setting the levy, how all that's going to work out, great. If we don't, we'll do the best we can. But to your point, yes, we need to look at all areas. But I think the department heads have done a great review here in what they're doing right now. And I don't see anybody asking for any more positions or anything like that. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner White and myself attended the NERC board meeting, and budget was on that agenda. And the things that we deal with because of our, our contracts that aren't negotiated, that's a fix. There are variables. There are things that we can deal with, and there are things that we can't deal with. That's why when we make those decisions, as Commissioner Mills referenced, we have, you know, short-term and long-term. And we need to look at things in the context of long-term, because our commitments are going to stay with us. And part of this process of wanting to have narrative and looking at these things and understanding them better is, is to make sure that our commitments are well-informed and reasonable, given what our community can afford to support. And health insurance, it was presented, you know, that's affected the budget 10 percent. If we look across all of the, you know, department heads that we saw there, we saw variables within that, but basically, 9, 10 percent, we're seeing significant there. We're seeing significant jump in insurance that we have, that's been on these reports. And these are things that we can negotiate to try to be more competitive in that regard, but there, there are things in many cases that are, they're just mandated, and they're part of employee contracts. And I think in the discussion at NERC, it was, we're projecting this at 10 percent in our insurance, but it could be 20 percent. And so we wait, we wait to find out. But here's the thing that I think is important for us, especially in communicating to the people that support governance within our community, is we can't make promises that we can't uphold. And when we say, we just bite the bullet this year, and then we'll see that our levies will level out at this, no, we can't. When we look at all the things that we don't control, that are, what we're looking at, you know, right now. We can, what I would refer to gracefully, but intentionally confront expenses that we see, or revenues that are falling off, because other people are trying to cut their budgets on our backs. And that's where we need to be advocates, to be able to support what, in good faith, was negotiated at the beginning of a lot of these things relative revenue. So if we have a discussion, which is just an overall, let's look at, at the funding and the services and allocations, we need to know where we're vulnerable. And in identifying those vulnerabilities, we need to be advocates to protect so that there's consistency in the, in those areas. So I would just say that as we go through this, we need to roll up our sleeves, and in good faith, we need to be stewards of taxpayer dollars and work very hard, and be transparent so that they can see the work that department heads and decision-makers are making. That's hugely important. And yes, there's a lot of variables, but we've been elected, and other people have been hired to be servants of the people in this community, and that's the job we're called to do.
Thank you. Good discussion. More to come in the future. So we'll move on to item number nine with Administrator Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. First item is the addendum to the lease for the solid waste facility. You passed this for the Grand Marais facility maybe a month ago. This would allow North Shore Waste to operate and maintain the facility that's being developed in Grand Marais. But we are also close to opening one in Hovland and in Tofti. So what we've done, or what County Attorney Peterson is on, is created, just amended that document that you've already approved. Because these were also being developed with, with bonding money, a lot of the same considerations that was in that contract in terms of the length of time and different provisions needed to also cover these two facilities as well. So these are just presented as two separate amendments, one for Hovland and one for, one for Tofti when it's developed. And that's, I don't know if, if you'd like to see anything else on that, Attorney Peterson?
I don't think so. I think you covered it. We took out the grant requirements and left the bonding requirements in. Obviously, there's a couple other minor considerations that are different for the satellite stations, and otherwise, it's basically a pared-down version that would be done, added on to the prior lease.
So this allows us to begin operation of the Hovland facility very soon. I think we're looking at, why don't you come on up, Dustin? Dustin Hanson's going to join this conversation, because he's been overseeing the development in Hovland.
Yeah, morning.
Morning.
So it's, I drove by there over the weekend, and it looks pretty ready to go.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting pretty close. I would say by the end of this week, if not the beginning of next week, we'll be complete out there. I think it took us about 45 days or so from start to finish. So I'm pretty excited how well it went. I feel like we're going to come in under budget a little bit, so that's, that's also a good thing. Now we just need to work at finding some staff and picking when we're going to be open and things like that, so.
And we've also kind of been talking a little bit about having an open house or ribbon cutting or something like that. So do you have a sense of when we might do that?
I'm thinking that first week in August. Decide if it should be on a weekend or weekday. Weekend might be a little better to get, get more people attending. So that's what I was thinking. And then in regards to the Tofti one, I think we've talked about this in the past, but I, we're going to try to hold off until fall, when it slows down out there. That transfer station is used on a daily basis. So trying to do construction while operate that at the same time. We'll have to see how the weather cooperates with us, if, if doing something in November or early December works, or even possibly in the spring before, before it gets busy. I think that's going to be about the same timeline as Hovland was. I think from start to finish, it's probably going to take 30 to 45 days to get that, that project complete, so.
Are you considering the days are open, like Tofti is Saturday and Tuesday with Thursdays in the summer for that, or limited more?
No, I think we'll try to stay the same way in Tofti. I mean, the goal in, in the project out there is to just really streamline the operation, make it easier to get in, easier to get out, spread out a little bit. Some of the things that have been happening there in the past, you know, loading semis and stuff like that with material is, is going to go away. So our, our goal in all of these was to, to create a U-shape transfer station where customers can come in, one entrance, drive through, drop off the items as they come, and then go out into different entrance. Because of some wetland issues in Hovland, we do have traffic going in and out the same, the same gate, where in Tofti, we're hoping to have an entrance and an exit, and then just spread everything out a little bit, so.
Sounds great. Questions, comments? Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendums to lease for solid waste facility, previously approved for Grand Marais transfer station, to include the Hovland and Tofti transfer stations.
Support. Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Maybe I could talk about the Community Center, North Shore Health MOU next. So apparently, there has been an MOU in place between North Shore Health and the Community Center for a backup kitchen. And this would be, if for whatever reason, the kitchen facility is a service, basically the hospital portion of North Shore Health, were to become unavailable, a flood or power outage or something, fire, I don't know what, that they could use the kitchen facilities at the Community Center. It's just a, kind of a backup plan, MOU. Apparently, when they first put this in place, it needed to be renewed every year. So on this renewal, we're just going to make it ongoing, so that, you know, it's just, we just can plan on that, or they can plan on that. So that's, that's what that particular item was for.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU between North Shore Health and Cook County Community Center.
I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. I just have a few, really a few updates today. One is, I guess Jana has been taking the lead on doing the Fisherman's Picnic booth for the county. So there will be a booth out there over the weekend. It's probably set up on Friday, and it'll be available on Saturday. And then, of course, Kristin will be starting on August 4th, so she will be here at the next board meeting on the 12th. But, so this is my last board meeting with y'all, sitting in the seat. But, and it's been fun. It's been real. It's been fun, real fun, sometimes.
Warped sense of fun.
I know. This shows you how boring my life is, right? So, so she'll be, she'll be starting on the 4th. We have been spending several hours a week and Teams calls, doing a lot of the transition work, just getting her up to speed on various projects and different things with the airport and chief and the community, and explaining the differences between unorganized territory and, on the Gunflint Trail and Hovland, some of the differences. You know, just a variety of things. We're setting up a lot of meetings for her that first week in terms of her orientation, make sure she's ready to understand the, the process of agendas, so she'll be ready to be here with you on the 12th. But also, we're going to spend some time in Grand Portage and City Hall, and meeting some of the community members she's going to be engaging with in their ductory kinds of meetings. And then Jana will be working with department heads and with commissioners to set up meetings, starting the second, third week, one-on-one meetings, where she can get to know you and find out what your priorities are. We talked about Hovland a little bit. The transfer station work continues in Grand Marais. Looks like a big, a lot of, lot of big dirt piles out there to me right now. But hopefully soon, they're digging that hole deep enough that they can start pouring concrete. That would be great. And there is a delay in the basement move, apparently, when they ordered the furniture. The person that took the order retired and didn't pass that order on. So we found that out. So the worst-case scenario is that those cubicles and furniture will be delivered on the 2nd of September. But Brook is, the rest of the, rest of it's done down there, ready to go. But Brook's been working with them, trying to get them to expedite that a little bit. So hopefully, it'll be sooner than that. You know, it's project management risk, right? So, and last, the bids for the LEC, I think we're coming back today or this week, and you will see that for your approval on the 12th, at that meeting on the 12th. And that's what I have for today.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go on to Commissioner Report, meeting updates, and then I'd like to have a few words at the end before we adjourn. Anybody have any meetings they'd like to talk about? Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had the Cook County Coalition of Lake Association meetings, and we had representatives from the Minnesota Lake and Rivers Association, which was really valuable. And they are also making their staff available for Lake Association meetings. And they will be at Fish Pick and are coordinating with Amanda Weaver and AIS and, and doing some really good work together. So I love the collaboration that's happening there. I would like to just publicly thank Andrea Tofti for, Andrea has covered for me when I've been double-booked for the Mid Trail Property Owners Association and for the Gunflint Canoe Races, and did an outstanding job of sharing emergency management information with our constituents and also with some of our summer residents. Personnel committee met recently. Commissioner Campbell and I attended that, and I really like the fact that they are addressing some of the overlap between wellness and labor management and, and just trying to get things kind of sorted out and cleaned up, and really appreciate that approach. And then earlier this week, I had a chance to attend a native governance webinar where we looked at land acknowledgements, naming, signage, some of the things that we addressed last year, late in the year, and haven't finished. So it helped me to get up to speed on that, and hopefully, as our new administrator comes on board, we can reignite some of those conversations. Cook County Historical Society has been working with Brooke Lassard. They had a little issue with their Cook County Historical Society has been working with Brooke Lassard. They had a little issue with their heating and cooling, and he has ordered parts and is working with Nordic Electric, and that should be repaired in the very near future if it's not already done in the last day or so. And shout out to our Ag Inspector and also, well, both to Tia and to Abby for their presentation on invasive species. They did that at the end of the Gunflint Trail at Chickwack on Sunday. It was well-attended, and they were able to recruit people to help pull, plant, and protect. So we'll be pulling invasive species up there on Wednesday afternoon. And Cook County Airport Advisory Commission has met, and they are working with the support of the EDA on a public works grant to do some of the taxi lane reconstruction. So they will be working with Jason Hale and Teresa Bida through the EDA to look at that hangar row taxi lane construction for 2026. And the IRRR has nine million dollars available for all of its grants, so we'll be completing a public works grant. And lastly, just for commissioners, I have received a summons for jury duty, so that would begin on September second. And just want you to be aware, I may not be here, and so when we think about the importance of a quorum, the importance of our budget season, I just thought it was important to give all of you a heads up.
Looking for a letter of resolution?
No, do not need that. One of the things I will say is that when you receive your jury summons, if you're seventy or over, it says, would you like to consider declining? Do you have an inability to serve? If I had an inability to serve as a juror, then I shouldn't be sitting here, and so I did not check that box. I am looking forward to serving my community. And that would be it for my reports.
Any other reports?
This is Commissioner Gamble and I, Commissioner Gamble and I went to the Arrow, to NERC. And an impression that was very powerful for me this time around was that the compassion and the sincerity of all of the staff that work with the people that are, that are at NERC, the, the young men and, and they have a low recidive, I can't say this word smoothly, a low recidivism rate. They do a number of things for the people that are there. But one question that I really had in one of the reports was that in nineteen, no, wrong, yeah, in 2024, Cook County had no one, no one in residency at NERC, and I would like to know, well, do we have no crime? Do we have no drug problems? This is a question for our legal department. And what is happening here in Cook County that is different from all the other counties?
I can't speak to those numbers with, I'm on the spot here, but I would say, speaking off the cuff, there are a number of things that have to happen for referrals for an inmate to be housed at NERC. And we are definitely trying to take advantage of NERC housing for this year. I know there have been at least a couple people who've been housed at NERC temporarily. Largely, I think, the, when someone is held for over seventy-two hours, they're sent to Lake County, which is closer, or Pine County, when Lake County declines to hold someone for us, but we are, we're trying to get them into NERC.
Well, my question is for, for our community people that have drug issues, what treatment or what, what, generally, what happens if a person is found guilty of trying to sell meth? What happens?
It depends on the, the number of prior offenses, so, and it depends on how much meth. So it, it, the answer, as any attorney will tell you, is it depends. But when you're talking, even if you're talking about prior conviction, there are times where people have to be held for their own personal safety during the penancy of their case or for the safety of the public, and in those instances, in the past, it has been hard at times to get people to NERC because there's this presumption that then you're there to stay, or you're there for this thirty-day program, ninety-day program, whatever it is. And if you're housing someone temporarily at NERC, the idea is that they could have a comp assessment done and maybe be released to the recommendations of that treatment program. So that is one of the things we're looking at and saying that, no, we don't, we're not saying that you're going to be in here until your trial date, that you still have the ability to come out and receive programming elsewhere, outside of the NERC facility. But when you're talking about actual conviction rates, there are, I think publicly, the, the presumption might be you are arrested for an offense, you go to trial, or you take a plea deal, and you go and serve your time, and then you are rehabilitated and you get back into the community. In actual fact, very few people are committed on their first offense, at least from the numbers that we see up here. So there are a couple of, you know, very seldom, luckily, do we send people to prison. But when we're talking about local facilities, when you have a conviction following the gridlines, there are presumptive cases where you are sending someone back into society immediately. So they're sa, serving a probationary sentence, and so they just don't, they haven't earned NERC time yet. So they're back in, in community under conditions, and that's when probation officer Keaton Riley or Micah Avery would be meeting with them.
Well, I would just like to say that I think NERC is a very good investment for this county, and this includes probation. I mean, this is, there's a number of categories there, but they shared a, let's say, an exit surveys, results from the people that had, had been there, and rather, and they rated them from one to five, one being the best and five being the worst, and by their, what they gave to us, that they were like a one point two, a one point three, somewhere in there, and with statements from, assuming this is all true, but in their handwriting of the people that were exiting, that staying there gave them an opportunity to really reflect on themselves. They were getting the support there, and they also, they had the time to sober up. And so it just sounds like it would be, it is a place of great value, so. Thank you.
Thank you on that. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a short, a brief update. We had Mayor Benson here talking about where, where things were at with Tac Harbor and our Tac Harbor Subcommittee met again, and we have a pretty comprehensive stakeholder list for, for parties that would be interested in, in that project, including outside of our community, regional partners, Lake County, Silver Bay, of course, Grand Portage, and everything we got going on in Cook County. And we're also now trying to form what they call an advisory committee. That's something that Stan Tech, the, the consultant is, is recommending, and, and my understanding is the advisory committee is kind of a sounding board. We're going to have all these stakeholders really bringing as much information as they can to the table, and then the advisory committee is going to be taking that in and processing it and trying to give some perspective, community perspective and relevancy, and, and to try to help guide the visioning there. And so we thought it would be appropriate to ask commissioners if there were individuals that they would recommend to be asked. Not that they would certainly join, but just people that we should reach out to that might want to serve on this advisory committee. It's a pretty large commitment, but we'll get some more details from Stan Tech, just some bullet points of what would make a good, good member of this committee, and, and we want it to be as well-rounded as possible and just getting various perspectives, but largely just that local community focus, which isn't easy necessarily. There's very diverse community and, and very broad geographically as well as culturally, so. But just, if you've got some suggestions, you can pass them on to me or Mayor Benson. Also, you know, with the resignation of Heidi Crampitz, our EDA Director, there was a special meeting of the EDA, which I missed, as long as missing this special meeting of the Board of Commissioners. But we've, we've come into some agreement with the North Shore Development Company, which, again, is our friends Jason Hale and Teresa Bida, and so I was, was pretty distraught when, when we lost our director, but now I'm, you know, swinging the other way and feeling really fortunate that we have these, these players in the region still that are very professional and have really great perspective, both regional issues as well as locally here, so we'll see how far this agreement goes. We've also talked about, well, maybe it's not conventional or common at this point, but could, could our executive director for, you know, quasi-short-term be this contract with North Shore Development Company, and how might that work or look? So just looking at our options and, and trying to take a step back, since we've had quite, quite the churn with the executive director at the EDA. And of course, the scope of their position would also change, hopefully significantly in the near future, both with the sale of the golf course, as well as wrapping up the business park. All the lots are now sold, however, the EDA is still responsible until all of the construction and water, waste, or stormwater management plans are enacted, and so there's still a number of lots that need to do that, and then the EDA can, can back off of that. And then, of course, the Tac Harbor is kind of the up-and-coming big project, so that'll, that'll take some more, some more focus, but, but yeah. All those moving parts are, are making us just kind of take another look at, at what the, the executive position, executive director position should be and, and will be and, and all that, and also trying to work with HRA as well on, on their needs, so.
Thank you on that. I believe my name is on the list as far as representing the West End and Tac Harbor and.
Yes, yeah, and, yeah, we also want to be very intentional with the West End especially, and representation in Schroder and, and your perspective as Commissioner, and so.
Double check.
Yeah, yeah, no, we certainly don't want anyone to be excluded, and we certainly don't want anyone to feel like something's pushed upon them either, so trying to be sensitive there and, and recognizing the historical significance of Tac Harbor, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a report? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, you, you touched on it relative to this advisory committee, but it would be advisable to get the particulars, because a lot of times when we're asking for people to participate, what are we going to do? What's the expectation? And if we can clarify that, that would help us so that we can be more specific in, in identifying that. The other thing I'd say is I think with, related to the EDA, that we have an opportunity to step back here and evaluate. Every time change takes place, it provides that opportunity, find out how can we do this, this better, and what have we learned? So I think that, that opportunity exists. I'll give a more detailed report relative to NERC at the Public Health Human Services. And the other thing, Commissioner Sullivan, myself, attended the wrap-up session with the HRA relative to their strategic planning. Strategic planning is, is a discipline that we hear that sometimes we grow numb to, and we come out of with substantive stuff, and sometimes we just go through the motions and say we've done it. But I think it's probably true that you can say that everybody's pretty aggressive when they come up with strategic, you know, planning. But I, being part of that process, it was, it was well-informed, and there is a strong intention to involve the community and find out what is it that the community wants. We've got some things in place. We want to find out how is that response to need been met, and also find out where, where do we have need that we're maybe missing, and that's best informed by our public, so we're going to be aggressive in, in looking at those opportunities. And, and just some other areas that I would call very healthy relative to the, the intention of this board in addressing the housing issues, you know, in our, in our community. So we, we will be doing some of these meetings and having Mary Somnus facilitate that, that process for us too, so. Good, that's, that's good. It's always good to have discussions and involve the stakeholders in those discussions so that board members are informed.
Okay. Last week I attended the ARDC Commission meeting, which means it's a larger group that come four times a year, and I just want to point out, we have a representative from the city that comes down from Mike Gary. He represents Grand Murray, and so we have folks from school districts and small townships and so forth. But this was put together by the ARDC Annual Staff Report for twenty-four, and then our Director Kristy Kane has put together ARDC Newsletter that just kind of highlights some of the things that was accomplished in 2024, and we're already putting together some good things that are happening in twenty-five, so that'll be presented next year. So we'll just point out a couple of the upcoming meetings. This afternoon, we have the Budget Facility meeting at three PM, so we have lots of good stuff here to, to go over at that meeting. And then our Board of Commissioners' regular meeting is not meeting until Tuesday, August twelfth. So we do have a big span here, but I don't want to say too much because some things pop in that we don't know about. So I will just kind of point out a couple of things. I have been working with Kristen various times about things, and Rena has been devoting her time also, which really will help Kristen to get into the swing of things when she comes on board, actually on August twelfth. Or August fourth, I mean, well, August twelfth here. One of the things I'm trying to set up is some introduction, introduction of her to the community, and then also working with Jana that perhaps we will have during the greet and treat. We would have that as the whole staff to come and be here also as a, as a continuation of her coming here. So we're working on dates. I'm working with her first and then see what happens. And also Rena has agreed that she would stay on for a short period of time in this transition, so I'm grateful to that for that transition time. Well, Commissioner Mills and I will be working there too with, with making it as easy a transition as we can. So at this point, I would just like to personally say my gratitude to you, Rena, for stepping in and helping us through this challenging time. I wouldn't say it's so difficult, but it certainly is a challenging time, and appreciate all your, your time, and, and now you have a, a new guest at your house to go home to, this new puppy, which I know greets you and helps you soothe the day if you've had kind of a rough one, so my appreciation for sure. Anybody else would like to have a comment or two? Commissioner Sullivan?
Shirley, well, I just want Rena to thank you on behalf of all of us, not just the Board of Commissioners, but the staff here at Cook County and the community. We have deep gratitude and appreciation and recognize and thank you for your outstanding work as an interim administrator. And you stepped into this critical position at a time of transition, and your steady presence, really thoughtful decision-making, and really clear, effective communication has provided us with continuity and confidence throughout our entire organization. Your deep understanding of county operations, having served for years in your role as Information Technology Director and, you know, previous transitions and the beginning of COVID, that institutional knowledge combined with your demeanor and your commitment to collaboration has made a huge positive impact, and our county services have continued without disruption, and And our needs have been maintained to be in the forefront, not our needs as an organization, but the people of our community has always been front and center for you. You demonstrate integrity, professionalism, and an unwavering dedication to public service. And so we extend our heartfelt thanks to you for that, your willingness to serve, and for your exemplary leadership. And I just, again, want to thank you. You've made us stronger because of your efforts, and we're grateful for your positive impact on government and our broader community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. That's well-stated. Yeah, it's looking at the uncertainty that, that we face with transition and wondering who's going to help us along this way. And there are people that have knowledge, the institutional knowledge is certainly huge, the history. And as I had stated before and recommending that Rena step in and, and help shepherd us through this process, that she had applied for the administrative position way back when, when we transitioned to this form of governance. And her, her resume is, is impressive. But who she is as a person, which is what, from the standpoint of focusing on who people are, is hugely important. Because I've said many times that it is out of the heart that precede the issues of life. And Rena is one that has, has not only lived and demonstrated her institutional knowledge and her core competencies, but her values and her heart. And that reflects in her, her understanding, her willingness to communicate openly and earn trust and culture, develop a culture of, of trust and relationship. And as stated many times, relationship is huge. It is the number one thing that county administrators have said is, is what you need in bringing somebody in. And Rena has certainly nurtured relationship. She hasn't looked at it from the lens of short-term service. She looked at it from the sense of stewardship and obligation with long-term issues, willing to tackle very difficult and very hard things that she could have excused herself from because it's just a short-term position. But as you said, when things fall at our doorstep, even in a short-term position, we can't ignore those things, but we need to demonstrate the integrity of who we are. And so gratitude is, is hugely expressed in what you've brought to us and what you've demonstrated. And we've learned through our experience with Rowan and with you, who's been mentored by your leadership, that this is the kind of structure that we want to build, a structure that is far sighted and that it realizes that everything that we do, everything that we say, every decision we make contributes to a culture. And we want to build a culture that is effective and has learned from your leadership. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Storey? I just want, I didn't realize today, it didn't hit me until you said it, Rena, that this is your last board meeting. So congratulations. But yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Rena for her time here. Yeah, it's been almost four months, which is kind of crazy.
I'm reminded of that a lot at home.
Yeah, I bet. So I, I hope after this, you can finally enjoy retirement. We'll see. But it has been.
I really kind of suck at retirement.
But I, I just want to say that, yeah, the insights that I've gained in this period of time with you have been so valuable. And just the different, wow, the different things that you are able to do, like knowing that, you know, you came here as MIS Director, served previously as interim administrator, and now again. Your involvement with Dustin and the transfer station project and stuff. You're just able to manage so many different things and I think bring very, like, a high level of thoughtfulness to what you do. And, and, and I think, as they mentioned too, the importance of communicating and sharing information with others and developing relationships. It's important to remind people of the importance of all of that. So thank you again for stepping in and doing this, and it's been a really great experience.
Thanks, Jana. I couldn't have done this job without you at all.
Just really briefly, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you as well. I'm not new to my office, but I am new to this role, and I can't say how much I've appreciated working with you over the last few months. I think the way that you see the big picture while still following the rules is really admirable, but the way that you make people feel seen and build trust is inspirational. So thank you.
Well, I just have to say, you're an awesome county attorney. I, I meant to say that earlier with the contract for that, those amendments. I, I have never seen anybody with so much on their plate figure out ways to prioritize and get this stuff done in a timely way. And it really matters, Jean. It's been great working with you too.
Your turn, David. Coming down the road.
Hi, yeah, again, thank you. And I don't really believe that you're gone, so.
I'm still here for another week or so.
And I mean, and your involvement in the school board. I mean, you're not leaving the community by any means. And so I know we can always pick your brain and, and learn from your leadership and your experiences. And your perspective is incredibly broad and, and deep as well, whether it's at the state government or here in the county. It's, yeah, your impact is huge. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
And I get to wrap it all up by saying, everyone said everything. And Rena, you'll probably be back somewhere, but not here, I hope. When, after we had Rowan as the interim, he was leaving big shoes to fill, and now the shoes are even better, are bigger. So I really believe that, I really hope our community is, is starting to trust our government. And you've been a part of that, and we've been a part of that. And I really don't want to see you anymore at any of these meetings. So anyway, that's it. She's not leaving the county. She's not dying, I hope.
No, I'm not.
And so she's, she's going to be around, and we'll be happy to see her elsewhere than sitting here. So thanks a lot.
Well, I, I would just like to thank you all. Thank you all for your trust. It's very humbling to sit here and have you say those things. I have always believed that, like, my personal mission is try to leave it better than you found it. And project management and program management taught me how to see that everything has an impact that you do. Some of those impacts are good, some of them are bad, and some decisions have both good and bad impacts. And the trick is always to try and find the opportunities and the, and the good impacts and minimize the bad ones. What we do in government is very dear to me. We are called to serve. It's public service. It's been my whole career, and I take it very seriously, that we have to build an environment here of culture where our employees are empowered and they understand the value that they have in this community and that, so that they can go out and serve the people that need their services and do that in a way that helps build the community. And so it's always forefront of my mind. And I just think you guys have such a great future ahead of you. I love all of the young leaders that we have here, that's the energy and the ideas. We've seen bunches of them this morning coming and presenting, looking at Jean over here. And we have a lot to be grateful for in this county, and we have a lot to be optimistic about. And so I just really appreciate the opportunity to be in this relay race and get the baton from Rowan and carry it on to Kristin and do my part. And yes, I'm still here.
I just wanted to reiterate what Gary said. I was thinking of that. I mean, you took on, you can't say it all here, but you took, I took on some hard things that you had no real responsibility to do. And, and you did. And that was exceptional. We're going to, we'll see the results of that.
Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate all of our comments to Rena. And is there any other further business?
I'd just like to make a, a wrap-up comment that Kristin stepping into this role as county administrator has communicated, you know, and, and just my welcoming to her that you've been amazing. And so I think the consensus is that the lives that you've touched, that everybody is consistent in, in the message. And we can be self-protective in the positions that we have with the authority that's entrusted to us. It's, it's an opportunity. It's, it's, it comes with that willingness to say yes or no when we want to because we're in that position of authority. And to the extent that you have not been self-protective in your stewardship, that's, that's, that's huge. And so each of us certainly can learn when we see and are inspired by people and, and how they deliver services. But I think it's, there's an awful lot of momentum that has come because of your, your time, and that's echoed by Kristin. So thank you.
Thank you.
So there being no other further business, we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys.